We've got the Cleveland Bradley Public Library is involved and the museums. So just about everybody in Cleveland.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Call the roll, please.
Yes.
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 Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Fourteen in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. Anything else, Adam?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be the consent agenda, the budget amendments. We didn't get electronically energized this morning in time from the mayor's office. So we have hard copies for you on your right. Do I have a motion for the approval of the consent agenda? Do I have a second? Hughes on the second. Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
It's fourteen in favor and none opposed.
I'm not aware of any unfinished business. We'll move on down to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a? Goings on the thing? Do I have a second? Oh, I'm sorry, we're skipping over here. I'm sorry. Trying to set the record. We'll start with Commissioner Beatty on the roll, please.
I have nothing to report today.
Commissioner Hughes.
Mr. Chairman, the fire committee will be meeting on March fourth at eleven AM here in the commission room. I know it's a little early to be calling this, but it'll give time for people to get set up or ready for it.
Is that all, sir?
That'll be it.
Commissioner Alford.
Second. Doing well, thank you.
Commissioner Blake.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, I have a few things. Get on paperwork here. Mr. Chairman, today we undertake the important task presented in improving our next budget calendar as we reflect on the past year and look ahead towards the future. It is crucial that we continue to manage our resources effectively and responsibly to achieve our goals. As you're aware, this is a reappraisal year. The assessor of property will finish his program shortly and work with the finance committee and the commission to set the new certified tax rate. This collaboration will be essential in ensuring that our tax rates are fair and equitable to all citizens. Budget calendar is not just a series of dates and deadlines. It's a roadmap that guides our financial planning and decision-making processes and ensures that we remain transparent, accountable, and aligned with our strategic objectives. Additionally, the calendar includes a voting session on Friday, June twenty-seventh at noon to set the certified tax rate, approve the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, and approve any final amendments to the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Since we are meeting on that Friday, June twenty-seventh, the motion includes the cancellation of the June twenty-third work session as well as the July seventh meeting. As we move forward with this budget calendar, I urge each of you to engage actively in the process. Your input, insights, and collaborations are vital to the creation of a budget that reflects our collective vision and priorities. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six budget calendar as presented and to cancel the June twenty-third work session and July seventh voting session. I put that in form of motion, thank you.
Do I have a second? Goings on the second?
One second.
Will we draw the?
So let me amend that motion and add in there the budget documents that are needed with the budget request. Thank you.
Commissioner Goings. It has been amended and the second has also been okayed. Open for discussion. No discussion, call the roll, please.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
It's fourteen in favor and none opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The finance committee also discussed the need to purchase batteries and pads for two AED devices that are located in the courthouse and courthouse annex. The mayor has an estimate cost of two thousand one dollar and forty-nine cents for the purchase of these required items. The finance committee voted to recommend purchasing these items from the commission line, five ninety-nine. Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize the purchase of AEDs. Put that in form of motion, thank you.
Second.
Second on Commissioner Slater, open for discussion. No discussion, call the roll, please.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
It's fourteen in favor and none opposed.
That's all I have, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Collins, please.
All's well on the third, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Winters.
All's well on the seventh.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Gilbert.
Things good on the fourth.
Commissioner Thompson.
Everything good in the fourth.
Commissioner Goings.
Fifth district doing well.
Commissioner Slater.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You will recall the commission requested a timeline and requirements for the coordinating committee's urban growth boundary procedure. You should have received the timeline by email and you have hard copies are available before you. As outlined in the timeline, the coordinating committee is scheduled to meet on February twentieth at five PM in the commission conference room. That's this Thursday. Two public hearings will be held in the commission room on March the sixth at four PM and March thirteenth at six PM. To comply with state requirements and meet the deadline for submitting our boundary to the state, the county commission must vote on the recommended growth plan by April seventh. Therefore, I place a motion on the April seventh voting session agenda to approve the coordinating committee's recommended growth plan. And that's all I have to report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The road committee met last week and voted to accept Carolina Lane. You should all have a hard copy of the acceptance form with the details. Mr. Chairman, I move to accept Carolina Lane.
Second on Commissioner Winters, open for discussion. No discussion, call the roll, please.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
It's fourteen in favor and none opposed.
Thank you.
We also learned that the state plans to install crossing gates at the old Chattanooga Pike Railroad Crossing. And also Superintendent Collins thanked the committee and the commission for allocating funds for strapping of our roads. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Ledford, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All's well in the sixth, I have nothing to report.
Thank you. Commissioner Rogers, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The past couple of days I have had the opportunity to be in Nashville for the Tennessee County Services Association County Government Day. I brought back with me a couple of documents that I'm going to give to Lori to pass out to you guys. It's the key bills that were voted on by the Tennessee County Commission Association along with the big bill that we've talked about a lot here. I know Commissioner Blake has dealt a lot with the real estate transfer tax. There is a bill HB six four nine and Senate Bill ten eighty-two by Speaker Pro temp Marsh and Senate Majority Leader Johnson that if passed would put about one point seven million dollars back into Bradley County each year, so on average. So just going to give these to Lori and she'll send them out to you guys so you kind of know what's going on and that you could speak with our local legislation and ask for them to pass that bill. That's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Yes.
Ask to be recognized. Can we go back to, I guess, this timeline? Because I know Commissioner Slater put it on the voting session for this commission to vote on the recommendation. So I guess the committee is going to wrap up their work and put together a formal recommendation for the three legislative bodies. But I was under impression, we had more time than that to review their recommendation. When I read the when I read the, I guess, the outline of how the whole growth committee came about, all who had to be on the committee, the legislative bodies' responsibilities, I was under impression we had a little bit more time than April the seventh. And the other part of it, if I remember correctly, which I shouldn't do, is that we can't just not do anything by doing nothing is wanting to be accepted. In other words, if we don't do anything, we by default accept the recommendation from this committee, this growth committee.
And Bentley's here too, but my recollection and when we tried to come up with this timeline, which we coordinated with the city with, the magic time is about the committee getting something to you all.
Which, assuming that be
And so this timeline is based on the committee, the committee has obligations and they have timelines that they have to comply with, which is what this timeline does comply with that.
Right.
Once you all get it, yes, if you have to act on the recommendation
Right.
to either say, yes, we approve this, or no, we don't.
How much time do we have from the day that we officially receive it to the day that we run out of time?
I don't know that yes. But that's for the committee, though. I'll double check. I don't know that there is a timeline, but you all ultimately have to vote it one way or the other.
Well, it seemed to me that we would have to have some kind of line in the sand because we could prolong it and
And ultimately, a lack of action would be deemed a you didn't approve anything.
But there's no date, who determines that? So there's got to be one, but I thought it was like ninety days or something like that. I'll go back and look at it.
I'll double check. I don't recall seeing a
The key to that is it's after we receive it. So we're not going to receive it. They had their public hearing on the March the sixth and then March thirteenth. I assume one of those public hearings, probably public hearing number two. Oh, yes, it says right here, sorry, final vote.
Yes.
So after that, that's
Then it comes to you all at that point.
So for all intents and purposes, March thirteenth is the day that the county, the city of Charleston and the city of Cleveland will receive the formal recommendation from this committee. And then the clock starts.
I'll double check that. I believe the clock is related to the committee's obligations to get you all a proposal that comes from the committee. And so this timeline is based on them doing that work, them doing that, and they will give it to you following final vote. So on, assuming this timeline is followed, on March thirteenth, you all will get from the committee, here is what we are presenting to you. I am not aware at this point of any deadline that you have, however, I will double check and make sure. But ultimately, it's coming to you. And if it's not approved by the three bodies, then it's going to go back to the committee.
Right. And then they have
I am not aware of any
From what I understand, each one of these responsibilities has quote unquote a timeline associated with it. Like the one that we're currently in is basically the timeline of this committee.
Yes.
And we've adhered to that. You're going to check and see, is this, if we get it on the thirteenth, that's less than a couple of weeks before we have to vote according to this. That's fairly quick.
Yeah, I can double check on that, but like I said, I'm not aware of anything that requires you once that, once the committee does their job, but I will double check on that to make sure.
Thank you. Anyone else before we move along? No unfinished business, the approval of the agenda, entertain a motion. Commissioner Slater and Commissioner Thompson. Open for discussion. End of discussion, call the roll, please.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
It's fourteen in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. We will now move along to agenda item A, Commissioner Slater.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a resolution authorizing Bradley County mayor to negotiate and enter into a subscription agreement with LexisNexis for use by the Bradley County Attorney's Office for legal research for a period of three years for a monthly amount of two hundred dollars per month for the first year, two hundred ten dollars per month for the second year, and two hundred twenty dollars per month for the third year. I place this in the form of a motion.
Who was the second, Commissioner Rogers? Open for discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
It's fourteen in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. Agenda item B, Commissioner Howard Thompson.
Mr. Chairman, it's a resolution amending the Bradley County beer permit application procedure to forbid the sale, storage, and manufacturing of beer and like beverages for consumption off premises within one hundred eighty-five feet of schools, churches, and other public gathering areas. I put that in form of a motion.
Second on Commissioner Gilbert, open for discussion. As I recall, this is exactly what the city has, is that correct? Okay. Cindy.
So is this request coming from the beer board?
I think we said originally
No, as I recall, can you address that?
No, this is not. This is from constituents that requested this, that we pass a resolution for this in the same distance as the city.
It has been, the beer board has been provided a copy of it and they have not responded in any way negative or against it. I think there's a phone that's available, they can call each other.
What do we have now?
We have a vote on the approval or disapproval.
No, I mean, what is the footage now for us? What's
Seven fifty. It's currently seven fifty.
So why was, so my next, I'm sorry. My next question would be, who picked one hundred and eighty-five and why is it going from? And I get that's what the city does, but I've never known this body to really do what the city did. So why are we going from seven fifty to one eighty-five? Why not two hundred or five hundred? Who picked the one eighty-five?
I was the one that requested the resolution. And I have, if somebody would like to, I've got somebody in the audience who would like to speak to that probably. That's why we're changing this resolution. Could we ask her to come forward, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
I'm Thiba Hamilton, I'm in Howard District. We are just asking for it to be the same as the city, just so that out in the county, we can have the same as the city. I don't know how to we have some folks that want to build a store and a restaurant, and if they can't sell the packaged beer, then they can't afford to do the rest.
Where's the property?
It's on sixty-four highway.
What's the address of the property? And the constituents around that area are okay with that? Around Hancock Road and Water Level are okay with that?
Everyone's adopted. I live Yeah, there's a winery.
And when the winery was built, what we changed at that time, another request, some request it go to one hundred eighty-five feet, same as the city.
The one hundred eighty-five was just a match. That is no, I mean, we didn't say one hundred eighty-five because we got to have a one hundred eighty-five feet. It was just we thought to follow along with the city, we made that policy.
Want to have any questions for?
Not for the lady, but I do have a question. Has there been any, over the years, has anyone else ever came and requested this change to reduce it? I don't know if Bentley or county attorney, if anyone knows that, the beer board?
Commissioner Gilbert has Yes, the wine, when they put the winery in, they asked to change it. They changed it to seven hundred feet.
From what?
I don't know, two thousand?
Thousand. Has anybody requested it from seven hundred fifty to a lower amount before now?
Just now.
There's no other businesses out off sixty-four highway that ever requested or talked about wanting to change this distance in the past?
They have been, there's a lot of stores out that way that's in, is not seven hundred and seven feet away. And one hundred eighty-five feet would probably, would probably get them within the distance to where they could sell packaged beer. And again, I want to say that I'm not a beer drinker and I'm not for beer. But you cannot drink beer on a premises where you buy it. It's open container law and you cannot open a beer or drink beer on a premises where you buy it. So it's not a beer joint, it's where they sell packaged beer. And they sell packaged beer at just about every convenience store that there is a location. Dollar Stores, Food City, and it's just an item that they sell. And there's a lot of people that it's not within the distance and they like to change it to same as the city, one hundred eighty-five feet, so.
From what I understand, it's going to be a pretty nice convenience store with food and other stuff like that.
Mr. Slater.
So when the Dollar General relocated out there a couple of years ago, was there a discussion about, about changing the requirements at that time for them to sell beer on sixty-four highway? Does anybody remember that?
I do, it never was brought to us. They're within, they're about a hundred feet. And the church there made a school, which is part of the church. And they're just about a hundred feet from the location, that's what they are. So it wouldn't make any difference in their property. But the Dollar Stores do sell it, the one on the closest to town, that sells. But the one that we're located at, well, it's too close to the school there.
One final question for Ms. Freiberg. Any business who is with, who is over the one hundred eighty-five feet, if this rule is changed and they are at the one hundred eighty-five feet mark, will they now be able to apply to sell packaged beer throughout the entire county?
Yes.
Moving forward?
Yes, so if it is changed, if you have applied in the past and not gotten it because of a distance requirement, you certainly could reapply if it is changed. And then I did want to answer your question of the, I can't tell you as far as whether it's been discussed at a meeting, but I can tell you the history. In two thousand and eight is when we went to seven hundred and fifty feet. Prior to that, we were at a thousand feet and so it was changed. Since my time here, since it's two thousand and eleven, we've not done any resolutions to change it since two thousand and eight.
Anyone else? Commissioner Alford.
This is probably a Bentley question or maybe even Crystal question. When we're looking at this one hundred eighty-five feet, I know businesses are built on a big lot. Is that from the building at one hundred eighty-five feet or from the edge of the boundary of the lot?
We passed that as well because you do have to legislate what that rule is. I believe ours is door to door, but it's in the regulations. We approved that. I believe we approved that sometime in two thousand because there was some question about how you measure it. So that is in our rules, it is very specific and don't quote me on that, but I think it's door to door that the measurement's from.
So that door to door would remain same with this new change?
Yes, the only thing we would be changing with this resolution is the distance. None of the other beer board requirements that are in place would be changing.
Since this is moving a lot closer than normal that we've had in the past, we may want to look at that legislation or that rule because some of these lots are pretty big. If you go door to door, you could almost go fifty feet and just be barely over the edge or a hundred feet. So we may want to look at that and change that part of it too, you know, whether it's door to door or property line to property line.
And ultimately, you all are the governing authority and you have authority to regulate those things, you just have to say what it is. So prior to us legislating and saying this is how we're going to measure it, there was confusion and people would measure it in different ways. So we can do it how we want to regulate it, but we have to do that. So I can definitely get that exact language for you about how it's measured.
Commissioners Thompson.
I know it's door to door, that's the way it has been. And when we changed it before, it was door to door and it always has been door to door in Bradley County.
Commissioner Hughes, please.
This is probably, I don't know whether it's a Bentley question or a Crystal question, hard question. Is this something, I could see in case in case where you would have situations where it could be approved at one hundred eighty-five feet and then others you wouldn't want it. Is this something that could possibly, it could be left alone and just waived from case to case? Or is it something we definitely have to make a change?
You cannot, there is no discretion. So when the beer board looks at this, whatever regulations you all give them, they apply them almost formatically. And if, so if you do not meet the distance requirements, there's no, what you're thinking of is almost like a variance from building code type things. There is no variance procedure, so it's a disqualifier. If you are, if you don't meet the distance requirements, you're not eligible to get a beer permit. So no, you can't, and the problem is if you do that, you'd be arbitrary. Sometimes you'd give it to somebody and sometimes you wouldn't. So I would, would say we should, not only should, not only can't we do that, but we shouldn't do it either because you will have unfairness arguments.
Mr. Gilbert.
So if it's, if it's because you don't want it to be the same length as a city, would you take it to two hundred, two fifty? What's to do with it?
Put that in the
Would that make a difference?
Since there's some discrepancy here from the thousand feet to seven hundred feet down to one hundred eighty-five feet, I'd like to make a motion to table this until we can get with Ms. Crystal and find out, you know, get that, go back to our rules and regs from the past and then just bring this back up at a later date because I think we need to change that. If it's one hundred eighty, if we go with one hundred eighty-five feet, somebody could build right on top of you almost and you're not going to have, you're not, you're going to defeat your purpose. So I think I'd like to make a motion to table this until we can find out some more facts.
Mr. Thompson.
We could table it or we could change it, it doesn't make any difference. But if it's two hundred and fifty feet or three hundred feet or whatever, but it does make a difference sometimes when you've got construction that people want to build a convenience store or build whatever and and sell packaged beer. And but you can have it what you want to do, you can have what you want to, but it's not, like I say, it's not, it's not a beer joint. It's not like in the city. You go in and eat in places where they drank liquor and they drank beer. And you go in these nice restaurants, they don't have them. If they don't have them, then usually, if they didn't have liquor or beer, then they usually don't have the restaurant here. That's reason you don't have big restaurants. But anyway, packaged beer is a lot different. It's just where you're one hundred eighty-five feet or you're three hundred feet, you still can't drink it on a premises where you buy it.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call point of order. We can't be discussing my motion until we had a second on it.
I have a second on Mr. Alford. I have a second on Mr. Alfred.
Second.
I'm sorry. Call the rule, please.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alfred.
Yes.
Cry.
Oh.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
No.
Thompson.
No.
Goins.
No.
Slater.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? It's ten in favor and four opposed.
Motion is, go ahead.
What do we want, Mr. Alfred? You made the motion. What do we want?
I would like clarification on this compared to our regular policy that we have right now. And, and make more distinguished where we're measuring from, door to door or property line to property line and so forth. And we need to change our rules and regs on that part of it before we go down to a hundred and eighty-five feet, I think. I'm not opposed to the hundred and eighty-five feet so much as I am opposed to where it starts and where it stops. So I think we need to look at that policy before we move on.
But I might ask the county attorney this. First of all, it's, it's decision of this commission, not the beer board, not anybody. It's decision, it's commission is what to do. And, and the county attorney said it was door to door. And that's what it is. And that's what it is now, door to door. So we can get clarification on that. We got the vote here to, to go ahead and get the clarification on. That's fine with me. But anyway, county attorney may.
Yeah, I, I'll get that for you. And, and like I said, I've got all of that. It's the book that I give to the beer board about the, the progression of everything. And I believe that was voted on separately from anything else. So I, I can get you that exact language on, on what our current policy is on the measurement.
Commissioner Winters, please. Is there any public concern with this, your, your district? With the, are their houses close around?
Well, they're, they're within the, the distance, you know, a dwelling. But it was in the paper last week, the whole write-up was. I haven't heard, I hadn't got a phone call or anything about it. If I had, I, I would have known.
Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Do, could I request that this resolution, I know we tabled it here, but could I request it if Commissioner Winters wouldn't mind sending this to legal and legislative to let them look at this resolution and be able to discuss in a committee hearing a, about this? Because Commissioner Thompson, while I agree with you on this, you've also made the comments, well, one eighty-five, two hundred, two fifty, like whatever we need to do. If we could send it to legal and legislative to work with Crystal, Ms. Freyberg in that committee to determine the exact amount of footage that needs to be, that would be my request if Commissioner Winters would like to pick that up in legal and legislative. And I believe other commissioners who have made the motions are on that committee to be able to discuss it as well. Commissioner Thompson could probably be there to be able to discuss that as well. Discuss in committee, bring it out of committee, back to a work session and voting session moving forward. If that could be a path.
All right with you, sir. We bring it back to.
Good.
There ain't no house.
I agree with that. And I agree with you. That's okay if you want to go on with it. But it's, it's very clear what this resolution said. And that's up to us. This come from, from the state. That's strictly up to us to make that decision. And what we put on here is the decision that we can go with if this commission passes. So it's, it's nothing, it's, it's nothing that we have to go back to the state or anything else with, or the beer board or anything, or anybody. It's strictly up to this commission to make that decision.
We'll have it sent over to legal legislative. I ask that we get on it promptly and get it back. We need to drag this thing along. I've got my own views. I'm, I'm a teetotaler, but I don't see where it does anybody any harm. A child in school or a child in church go to a convenience store and buy a Coca-Cola with a can of beer sitting right beside it. I, I have trouble understanding that part of it. But we'll do that. Okay, now we'll go to item C, which is Daniel Beatty.
A, a motion to approve the tax committee's recommendation to offer parcels for sale.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Second on Commissioner Slater. Open for discussion. Be a no discussion. Call the rule, please.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alfred.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
It's fourteen in favor and none opposed.
Thank you very much. Agenda item D, Commissioner Malin Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution authorizing a continuous four-year appraisal cycle and memorandum of understanding. It's on page thirty-five through seventy-one. Put that in form of motion. Thank you.
Second.
Move as a second. Commissioner Hughes on the second. Open for discussion. No discussion. Call the rule, please.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alfred.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
It's fourteen in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. Commissioner, agenda item E, Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. This is motion to accept the petition to abandon right-of-way located along Eleanor Drive identified by Tax Map zero six five J Group E Parcel zero one seven dot zero zero. You can see this on pages seventy-two and seventy-five of your packet. In this, I put this in the form of a motion and for discussion, well, I'll get a second first.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Ledford on the second. Open for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, this was recommended unanimously by the planning commission. And if it's approved by the county commissioner, commission, Ms. Freyberg will draft a quick claim deed to both adjacent property owners for the unopened right-of-way. Bentley is here. If you have any questions for him.
Do we have any questions for Bentley or anyone else? Discussion closed. Call the rule, please.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alfred.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
It's fourteen in favor and none opposed.
Commissioner, agenda item F, Commissioner Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a motion to accept the finance committee's recommendation from HCI. Funding recommendation can be found on page seventy-six. I forgot going all that through there since it's a hard copy or you have it. I put that in form of motion. Thank you.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Goins on the second. Open for discussion. Yes.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment on the HCI committee. I've joined that committee back when it was originated, two thousand and eight or nine. Then whenever I got elected as commission, I turned that over to George Gray, who does our HCI. This committee i- is, is very personal to me. It, it, it does a great deal for the community. And these folks that do this work tirelessly and have given of their time to do this, for us to take the burden off of this commission. And I would just like to recognize those folks that are on this committee because I don't know that we really realize how much work they do take off of us as a commission if we were to take this. But those folks, I, I want them recognized if it's possible. Dr. Paul McCord, Reba Terry, Lisa Stansberry, Stan Berry, Chuck Hammonds, Israel Farless, George Gray, Jennifer Taylor, Scott Oliver, and Dan Rawls. I would just like to say to them, from me, I appreciate the work they do because I know what it takes and I know what it is. And I know the time that is consumed. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
While we're thanking people, I want to thank our own very, Lori Multry. She's the administrator. Has to attend all those meetings. We all saw when we came in through the back about eight hundred pages of documents that she produced or got them. Keeps them all in line, accepts all the applications, answers all the phone calls and all that kind of stuff. So thank you to all of those members. I know they met four or five, maybe six times or so, but thank you, Lori. Appreciate all you do.
Thank you. Any other discussion? There being none, call the rule, please.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alfred.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
It's fourteen in favor and none opposed.
Thank you very much. We'll now move along to communications from the audience.
Mr. Chairman. Apologize. I think our county attorney's got some answers that we asked a few moments ago. If you would recognize her, I appreciate it.
County attorney is recognized.
Sheet says that if the county or any municipality rejects the recommended growth plan, then coordinating committee shall reconsider its action. Any such reconsideration, the coordinating committee may recommend a revised growth plan and re, resubmit that. But the key part is there's not a timeline, but it does say that either the city or the county can declare an impasse and then get with the secretary of state for them to get involved. So the time would be city or county saying, we're at an impasse and we need the state to get involved.
Okay, my question is, when, on March thirteenth, I'm assuming, is it March, I don't have.
March thirteenth is when.
Is when.
You should get something.
Is when we get the form of recommendation. And then how long do we have to say yes or no?
There is not, but the city or county, both Charleston, Cleveland, or us can say we're at an impasse. So.
But when, I mean.
I, I mean, if you take too long, I would assume either Charleston or the city would say, they haven't done anything and we're at an impasse and we want the secretary of state to get involved. So.
But why would they ask for the secretary of state to get involved without it going back to the committee?
Well, you wouldn't, but I, I thought your question was based on, is there, there's not a time that I see in the statute for how long we have once we get it to reject it or accept it.
That just doesn't make any sense. How in the world can they say something's taking too long, but yet they don't define what long is?
Well, so it will take longer than that if it's rejected. So if, if you all get it from the committee and any of the three bodies rejects it, then it goes back to the committee.
It's not if we get the recommendation. We will get a recommendation.
Correct. So the, the committee will give its recommendation, assuming that everything happens the way it's supposed to on March the thirteenth. Then the three bodies will consider it and either approve it or reject it. If any of you rejects it, it goes back to the committee. So the reason why there's no timeline is because it's impossible to know how long this process takes. If all three of you approve it the first time, it's done.
We're done.
If it goes back to the committee, then the committee has to review it, submit another proposal to you all that's, which then you will reject. Or so it has to go through this process twice. But the, the time is at some point after the entire process has been followed, either city or county can say, we're at an impasse. We want the secretary of state to come in and look at this.
But that's a nuclear option that someone has pretty much, that they can pull that anytime after our first vote on it, correct?
After the two, after the second time.
After the second time the committee has it. So it's got to go back to the committee a second time before an impasse can be declared.
Correct. Yes.
And how long does the committee have to, for their second round at this? I mean.
I don't think there's anything. I think the only magic date was the hundred and twenty days for the committee to get you all the first report. Or the first recommendation. So that's the, the main timeline. And as Commissioner Rogers called it, sort of a nuclear option at some point to say, we're just at an impasse. We can't, we can't resolve this.
Okay. It doesn't make any sense, but.
If anything else said.
I mean, so if we don't do this on, what, what was the date? April seventh, I mean, no harm, no foul, right? I mean.
That would be correct, yes.
We go to May or June. No harm, no foul, right?
I don't see any timeline that requires you to approve it on that date.
Okay.
Yes, please. I can meet with the legal legislative committee. Meetings at seven. Thank you. Now we'll go back to where we were. Communications from the audience. I'll allow five minutes. If anyone would like to speak, please. Provide us your name, please. Don't have to give your address.
Thank you for having me. My name is Wanda Pugh. I don't have a car, I don't have a car. I depend on public transportation. I was at one time taking the Sethra transportation. Because the, the person who identified herself as the director, her draconian demands, I asked her, for her manager, who she, you know, who she has to answer to, I asked for this person's name and, and phone number. That was the beginning of the week. At the end of the week on Friday, when I got off the bus, I thought I heard something, but I, I, listen again, I didn't. And then someone, one of the operators for the bus approached me and said, the audio and video were on. And the manager heard everything you said and did, and she didn't like it. And I was told I wouldn't be able to get back on the bus, just for giving an opinion. I did say, and I meant it, I said, this is the worst transportation system I've ever been on. I, like I said, I don't have a car. I depend on public transportation. Take me to the market. I get milk, two gallons every week. I get water and sort of things. And I was told, who told me this information was the vehicle operator, the so-called director. She had this woman approach me at my residence. I wasn't spoken to at the Sethra. I wasn't spoken to by the woman who decided to do this. I've been walking, I live near what's called the New Walmart in, in the south area. I have to walk with these items. I walked here. I've been doing this since the last, before the last Friday of, of November. I can't afford a cab. I can't afford a cab. They charged me coming from Huff, they charged me twenty dollars coming from Huff. So for me to go to the laundromat, and I do, I, I prefer that Walmart up there, that would cost me forty dollars just for, for one trip. And I really want to get this resolved. I mean, I've been on public transportation systems around the country. They all, they all appreciate your, your input. They had personnel come on the bus and they, they said, if you want to fill this out, this survey out, you know, you can. But this, this director, I, I mean, she doesn't have control, evidently she doesn't have control over her anger. I just gave an opinion. I did say that this is the worst public transportation I've ever seen. And then when I say draconian demands, okay, so this, this luggage. I can't carry that. I can't carry two gallons of milk. I can't carry two gallons of water at the same time. For me to catch a cab, I would have to go to these places at least two times a day. And one trip would be forty dollars. So that'd be eighty dollars just to go to the laundromat and go and get the, the, the necessary items, you know, just to live. Food, water.
Uh, Commissioner Goins.
They didn't call me in the office. They, they called me at no office. When I got off the bus, the vehicle operator approached me. She said, oh, and the vehicle operator, they, they have like hench personnel there. What happened was this vehicle operator. She said, oh, and the vehicle operator, they, they have like hench personnel there. What happened was, um, this vehicle operator got me in a conversation. Um, uh, because I, I carried this, um, before I say that, um, when she did this, I called the police. And then, um, and so he's, you know, he, you know, she went her way and I went mine. He talked to me, he talked to her. I said, what'd you see she say? I did, because they have a list of, um, um, things you're not supposed to do. He said that, um, she said that you were, um, being difficult. So in other words, if I, um, question you, I'm being difficult? So, um, anyway, um, this, um, um, uh, vehicle operator got me in a conversation about, uh, my luggage. I said, I, I said, I, I won't have it in the aisle. I have it sitting with me. And, um, so what she did, uh, at the, um, at the mall, there are three buses that come to the mall. What, um, so we got into this conversation. So she got off the bus and the other two buses, you know, she went to that third bus. Now, if you, and all the operators, they have something to say to each other. They radio each other. But she got off the bus and went to this, um, the, the third operator two times. So evidently whatever she had to say to this operator, she didn't want me to hear. Okay, so we got into this conversation and this is the same operator who told me that you're no longer, um, you won't be able to get on the bus. So what is she getting, bounty points? I mean, why, um, why do these two?
Uh, go ahead and speak for a longer man, but I think this is Sethro, uh, city or county, neither, neither one are in control of it, I believe.
I'm sorry, I can't.
Sorry.
It's Sethro, Seth, Sethra Board.
There's a Sethra board that would govern all this.
Who, who, who does it fall under though? Not the county or city?
There, yeah, it's separate and apart from.
Where? Somebody's got to be in control of it.
It's the, the board itself.
It's on it.
Sethra board.
Who's on that?
No, the.
No, it's not.
Where's it at? Where's there?
There's a board of directors for Sethra.
Yes.
County mayors are usually placed on that. And I believe our mayor sits on the Sethra board.
He is one member of it.
One member of a bunch of different members that are on it.
I never got a chance to contact her manager because, um, I'm not allowed on the property. Um, the police told me I'm not allowed, I'm not even allowed on the property.
Could get her name and number.
Because, um, they, um, they said I'm no longer allowed on the bus and I wasn't able, I, I was trying to find out who can I call. Anytime you call them, you get their office. So they know what you want to talk about. That's why I was told not to get back on the bus. But I was trying to find out who I, where do I go to?
Well, we're going to ask that you, uh, Adam, will you go contact the mayor? Right. Uh, it's evident that the county doesn't control it. City doesn't control it. It's a board, not even located in Cleveland that controls it. And, uh.
I was trying to find this out. I went to the library. No one could find it either.
Well, we, we'll get to it. Uh, Adam, Adam is the vice mayor. He'll get with the mayor who's out today and get to it. And if you don't mind getting Adam's telephone number or something so you can find out where we're at on it. That be all right with you?
Yes, sir. Thank you ever so much, sir.
That's, that's our job. Listen, uh, I know I've lived in, during the days of my life, forty dollars would have put me in starvation. I, uh, I can identify with it. Uh, but we'll try to help you. It's evident somebody's in a little cocoon apparently. They don't have to listen to reality. We'll, we'll, uh, Adam has, has the ability to get to the bottom of it.
Thank you, Chairman Cry. I appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you for coming up. People come to us with problems, legitimate problems, but, uh, yours seems to be legitimate, ma'am. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? All right. We'll move along to the next meeting. It's a work session on Monday, February the twenty-fourth at seven P M. And we will have a legal and legislative committee meeting thirty minutes before on the beer sale, sale of beer at a convenience store. And, uh, the Bradley County School Road Show, February the twentieth at nine A M, Taylor School, Main Street, Cleveland, February the twenty-fourth at noon, Elks Lodge. And we have a fire committee meeting in March the fourth, fourth.